I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for the spring weather. Please keep our community safe, our fire, and please. Amen.
Amen.
I guess I don't have to do roll call, right? No roll call? Okay, roll call. Ms. Lee's, aye. Mr. Beck?
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Here, here.
Okay, old business. This is a discussion regarding issue two and how it pertains to Sims Township. So with that, I'm going to move into old business as none. Let's move into new business. Local police and fire comments and experiences. Hamilton County Sheriff's Department and Loveland Sims Fire Department.
However you want to split it.
How you want to do it?
Thanks for having us tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to talk on the subject. I looked at two things. Mr. Bryant, you had asked specifically about OVIs. Because of the way they categorize them now, we weren't able to search back much farther than this year because we have to go in by hand. But we've had 33 OVI IRS throughout the county in calendar year 2024, and five of those were drug-related. So, and I spoke to our traffic safety supervisor Sergeant Bly. He has not seen an uptick in drug OVIs. It's remained steady the past. So he's been in there four years now. Three years, three plus.
How do you diagnose drug-related?
They'll look for, so there's a couple different ways, but a lot of our officers have been through a school called A-Ride, which is a step above the general SFST that they're taught in the academy, and that's taught to clue them in on some indicators of drug impairment. Quite honestly, with marijuana, it's usually the odor. It's a very distinct odor. Probably even more distinct than alcohol.
Yes.
But the battery of tests would be similar to what we'd put someone through just to establish impairment would be what we'd put them through. If we suspect alcohol, we would just do a different chemical test.
So let's say you pull somebody over, and the driver doesn't reek of marijuana, but someone else in the car does. According to the way issue two is written, you can't, you can't smoke while you're in the car.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes. Okay, so that would be kind of interesting. Who do you cite?
That is going to be kind of interesting. I mean, you would have to do a little investigation, a little legwork, and try and establish whose it was.
Okay. Possible issue.
The other thing I looked at, Ms. Pennsby asked me, I looked at our, there are two sites, two medical dispensaries in Columbia Township, and I looked at call activity at those. I started off, I asked the district commander Lieutenant Abner, I said, you know, this is a question that the trustees have up there, just what have you seen there? And right off the bat, he said, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary, no more than any other business. I mean, they're both pretty busy businesses. I'm not sure if you've ever been in the area, but they do get a lot of foot traffic. We looked at calls for service from 2020, the beginning of 2023 till now. Had 33 calls at the location on Ridge Road. That's a little skewed. I went through those. Not a lot, but at least 10 of those calls are kind of what we call landmark sites. They've used that as a, something else has happened, an auto accident on Ridge Road, and they pulled in there. One lady was having trouble with a family member and had gone there and asked for an officer to meet her there. That's a, it's part of a large shopping center. But one trouble with a customer at that location, someone had asked to leave and came back later that day and was arrested. The other location down on Ridge, Sunnyside, 24 calls for service. Again, no trouble runs there. Most of those are auto accidents occurred in the parking lot. But for both locations, the biggest call from any type was alarm drops. There are alarms going off in the night or during, during the day.
Does your statistic of 30 OVIs, or what do you call them?
Thirty-three OVI IRS.
Thirty-three, okay. In arrests, okay. In the whole year in Hamilton County?
Just, just in the areas that the sheriff patrols. The sheriff's office has made 33 OVI IRS in 2024.
Thank you.
Can you compare that OVI to alcohol? I mean, you're saying 33 chemical-
So a DUI is now operating vehicle impaired.
Right, right. But so you, you can't distinguish what was OVI alcohol-related to OVI a chemical?
Yeah, so of those 33, five were, were drugs, yes.
Five out of 33.
So I think, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight were alcohol, five were, were drugs.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you digging at the statistic, honey.
No problem.
Is that all you have?
I have another question, I guess.
Sure.
If Sims Township, if, were to allow a dispensary, or two, or three in the township, is there preferred locations? I mean, you, money-based business, close to the expressway is not a good idea, or far, or, or close to the expressway is a good idea?
I don't know that I can speak as what's the best location for, are you asking what's best for them?
For, for us?
For us?
The safest for them.
Safest? I mean, that's hard to say because I'm assuming they're, assuming they're going to want to be in one of your larger business areas anyway. I can't see them wanting to be off the beaten path, if you will.
I'm thinking of perhaps robbery of a dispensary and so on and so forth, egress?
I mean, obviously, close to a highway is going to be better for that, you know.
You mean more advantageous?
For them, yes, sorry.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I could ask, I could get with our intelligence unit and see if they could come up with something on those, maybe like a pattern, but.
I know that we were trying to do things to dissuade robberies of businesses that were close to the expressway, entrances and egress, whatever, by even parking unmanned cruisers in parking lots and things like that in different areas. So I would think that we'd be trying to dissuade robbery of dispensaries, whatever.
Have we had a robbery from a dispensary this year that you know of?
We haven't had one from any of, any of those, no.
Well, I'm sure that they're providing their own security, whatever, in whatever form that is.
That I'm not familiar with. I know we don't have the details.
Well, those might be questions for other petitioners or something that we can ask. All right, thank you.
Thank you, trustees. I submitted a white paper to the trustees a few weeks back, and be glad to talk about that a little bit. I reached out to my counterparts in Colorado, and they were not experiencing, and they've had it for a while, and they haven't been experiencing any upticks in EMS calls or upticks in fire-related incidents and/or incidents related to community risk reduction, fire prevention, things of that, storing improper materials or anything like that. What we normally see in this area in Sims Township in overdoses is opioid overdoses and fentanyl. And that, quite honestly, had its peak, and it's really on its way down in this area. Sometimes we'll get a small peak, if you will, because something comes into the area. But generally speaking, from the highs that we saw during COVID, it's really, it's really on its way down, especially in the Sims Township Loveland area. So we don't see a lot of that, and we don't see a lot of overdoses from the use of marijuana, unless some reason it was laced with something. And again, we are not experiencing that here. And the type of product that you're going to get from a dispensary is not going to be laced like that. That's more of a homegrown type of deal there than it is getting that from a dispensary. So we don't see that. One concern that we, we would have is edibles falling into the wrong hands.
Like COVID?
You know, children, you know, getting, getting a hold of edibles. You know, that's probably more of an educational issue to educate our residents, educate. Hopefully, hopefully, the dispensaries would have that kind of literature to hate, keep this away from your children and not, not have it laying out so they mistake it for a gummy bear instead of that, or, or-
Right.
A laced brownie instead of a grandma's browning. So those are the kind of things that, that, you know, that have our concern. And then, as I said in our white paper, the law's changing. So, you know, the fire department, like any other, like any other business, we're just a small sampling, if you will, of the greater human condition. So, you know, we, we have made some changes internally within our policies to ensure that we educate our employees. Yes, it is legal, but you're still not permitted to be high at work. And how do we, how do we determine that? You know, every, every time a township fire EMS unit gets involved in some kind of a fender bender crash, every one of our employees is, is drug tested for that. And we're required to have drug testing because we receive federal grants. So any federal money that you receive, you must have a drug-free workplace policy, and you must test your employees. So that's, that's something that we do. So we're doing that through education, through our employees, to ensure that they understand that even though it is legal for them to, to partake in that on their off days, it's certainly not legal for them to show up to work impaired and/or actually possibly having it in their system should they be in that accident and it wind up being tested. And even though they ate it or smoked it or whatever on Saturday, and they have the accident on Monday morning, it can still be in their system. And that can create a problem for them and their employment.
I think that's going to be an employment problem everywhere.
I agree with you. I agree with you. You can't, you can't walk around at lunchtime probably near any large working facility, the malls downtown, that you don't smell the odor of marijuana at, at break times and lunchtime. So that means those employees are going back to work, whatever they're doing, going back to work intoxicated. Or impaired, I should, that would be the proper word, whether it's impaired.
Impaired.
Yeah, impaired.
So we don't see a whole lot of implications for us with the dispensaries.
Okay, any questions for them? All right, moving on, we're going to do-
Thank you for the info.
Yes, thank you. Local government experience, we have Columbia Township, we have Melissa Taylor. Would you like to come up to the podium? Thank you for coming.
We appreciate it, Melissa.
So we didn't really talk about anything specific that you wanted me to cover, so if you would lie, I can just give you a little bit of a summary, and then you can ask me some questions. So when the state of Ohio issued the original 60 licenses in the state for the first round-
Was that medical?
Yeah.
Yes, because recreational was just approved. So this was-
Right.
So three were issued to Hamilton County. And a lot of communities immediately issued moratoriums because there was a lot of concern, understandably, about how this might impact a community. Columbia Township ended up with two of the licenses by choice. We are in a really unique situation, and this came up in your question to your Hamilton County officer. Columbia Township is very urban. We, when we were originally a full township, the size of Sims, then were annexed, the majority of our property went to the city of Cincinnati. So what is now Oakley and then parts of Hyde Park and even Norwood, I realize that's not city of Cincinnati. Those were all Columbia Township. So my point is that Columbia Township sounds sweet and rural, but we're very urban. We have very dense neighborhoods. We have US highway and federal interstates that run through Columbia Township. And we have the Ridge Road interchange on I-71. Most people are familiar with that exit as Oakley. Oakley is east, Columbia Township is west. So we had, we have, that was very much of an interest to a lot of the dispensaries, an interstate interchange close to the urban core. Due to the population density is also due to the volume of traffic on the interstate. And the other thing unique about our location that drew, and I say this not about Columbia, this is unique to Columbia, it's not unique to you. I'm telling you, this is unique, and it's what attracted a lot of the interested license, licensees, is that the, there was a business district immediately at the ramp off of the interstate. And it already had substantial big box, junior box, restaurants, et cetera. And so you don't pass a neighborhood on your way to our two dispensaries. So our trustees believed that that would be an ideal location, and it was the location of demand. And so we passed legislation that authorized, and this was a question I think that either you, sir, Mr. Bryant, or, or Mr. Beck asked, we passed legislation restricting to two dispensaries while a lot of communities were doing moratoriums, and we also restricted it to that highway interchange area. Even though we are spread out, we chose that we felt that that would have, not knowing what potential impacts would be, that that would have the least impact on any neighborhood areas, any walkable business districts, or any kind of local neighborhood business areas, Main Street-type areas. We have those as well. And so one medical marijuana dispensary opened in a lease building, and the other chose to do a build-to-suit. So one opened sooner than the other. We had one that opened in 2019, and then one that opened in 2020, I believe. And so they've been, they've been in operation four years. And as he mentioned, we don't have any issues with them. We have fewer issues with them than we have with our big box retailers. We have a lot of issues with the big box retailers, both inside the store and in the parking lot. We have none of those issues with our dispensaries. And then also, I don't, I don't know, you may be aware, that we required a host community agreement with the dispensaries, that, again, not knowing what the impact of the dispensaries might be, we would, we wanted additional revenue to, in exchange for that location. And we entered into agreements with both of the dispensaries that they would share a percentage of their gross profits with us. And they do. And we, knowing that the state would continue to expand the licensing, and this is something that I would encourage you as a board to consider, we were in early in the market. As I said, we happened to have a location that worked for our community because it was urban and it was interstate. And it was a location that worked for the dispensaries. And so it was a match in that respect. And we were agreeable to a dispensary in the first round of licensing from the pharmacy board. Since then, the, under the medical marijuana dispensary, in the years since we were able to secure the two dispensaries, the state has tripled the medical marijuana licenses. And now with recreational, there will be hundreds of licenses. So the, I don't know how many ultimately will be awarded and will build and will be successful, but you're going from a very high-demand market with very few locations years ago to potentially at some point, will there be? I don't know. I'm not a market analyst. But, you know, we spend a lot of time as administrators and as trustees in the economic development world, you know, you look at what market saturation, market opportunity and such. And so I think those are factors that, the questions that you're asking and the priorities that I'm identifying that were, were a learning experience for us and were important for us, are all important for you to, you know, consider the safety impact and the, which we've had no issue with, as has been discussed, and then a locational impact. And other than during the height of COVID, when there were restrictions on the number of people who could be in a space as a result of the six-foot spacing, we've never even had lines outside the, the building, or people loitering. We just don't experience that. So we've had a great experience with them. We appreciate the revenue. We didn't do it for the revenue, but the revenue was something that we wanted in the event that we needed to have an increased police presence or that we needed to have, or if we experienced increased EMS or fire calls, which we have not. We did, however, pledge some of the revenue on an annual basis to additional police patrols in the area of that interchange. But it wasn't for the dispensaries. It was funded by the dispensaries, but it was as a result of so many of the other, you know, businesses and issues that we were having there. We have hotels there, like I said, big box gas stations, a lot of different restaurants. It's heavily traveled through area to Norwood, Oakley, to Kennedy Heights, to a lot of neighborhoods. So it has a substantial amount of traffic.
So you have a voluntary revenue sharing agreement with them?
We do.
So is that going to go away because the state is saying that it's no longer legal to do?
I'm not aware of the state saying that it's no longer legal to do. It's a, it's not a community impact fee, which was this Ohio Supreme Court decision. It's, that's not what it is.
Jeff, is that on your list when you talk?
Yeah, we can, yes.
Okay.
We can talk.
I had the same question, Joe.
Yeah.
You know, so we'll bring it up then.
Okay.
Yeah, our attorney, Dinsmore, look, I mean, I'm not an attorney. I'm not going to represent Dinsmore by speaking here. But our attorney looked at that, and the community fee, the host community fee is not a community impact fee. There are, I think, like five measures or five factors that define what a community impact fee is, and these, this doesn't meet those, the way it was structured. So, but that was our attorney's opinion.
Impact fee.
So you structured it as an impact-
Community host.
No.
No.
It's a host agreement.
Not an impact fee.
I heard the other one, but I just heard impact fee.
It is not an impact fee, right.
Not an impact.
But sometimes when communities hear fee that's assessed, they are, or imposed, they go to the Supreme Court decision, Ohio Supreme Court decision, and that's not what it is.
Okay.
They entered into it voluntarily, and it's not on the community, it's on the vendor, which is different than a-
Okay, so back when medical marijuana came in, there was no real state collection of fees that the local jurisdiction got a piece of? Is there, or was there?
I don't understand the question, sorry.
Right now, in issue two, I guess it was, passed, as written before modification by the state legislature, there's a 10% fee on sales. Of that 10%, so much is split, 36, 36, 25, and three, I think. 36% returns to the local jurisdiction, be it township or otherwise.
It's proposed.
Okay. Was that in effect for the medical marijuana?
No.
So, so you basically had to negotiate your own-
Correct.
Recovery of services that you had to provide, yes?
They wanted locations.
That makes a lot of sense as to why that happened.
And they wanted to be at that location.
Yeah.
But now the state, or just the way this is written, there is money earmarked to go back to the local jurisdictions, and that might impact any kind of agreement like you had.
It potentially can.
Yes, okay.
The medical marijuana dispensaries that are existing have a first shot at the licensing for recreational.
I thought that-
They do.
I thought that if you already had a medical license-
You have the-
Then you automatically get recreational.
You have that first option, correct.
Yes, yes.
And then beyond that, if you want to open a new-
Right.
Dispensary for recreational, then there's a-
Sims has no medical, so.
So you potentially would open more than two?
No.
Okay.
No, we would not.
Saturation.
Yeah.
A saturation issue.
I mean, we weren't certain how two would work, but-
Are they both in the same area?
Yeah, they're around the corner from each other, but they both felt strongly that the market was there and the interchange was an epicenter for, based on the population demographics. And now we, now because there was a push, my understanding, in the second medical marijuana licensing round, there was a push to open, to make it easier for rural communities to have a dispensary because people are driving two, three, or more counties into dispensaries like ours.
Medical make more, make more sense to do that.
So we'll see what happens with recreational.
Okay.
Okay, aside, is there a stronger stench smell? You don't notice a smell?
No, everything is sealed. It's not cultivation, it's just a dispensary. And everything is completely sealed.
You don't smell from cars, or you know how, like, some areas you just drive through and then there's the stench?
No, never, no. You mean from people who, typically people, if people are, again, I'm not an expert. These guys wouldn't be, but we don't, I mean, I smell that when I go downtown Cincinnati to the courthouse or county building. I see you all the time.
Bengals games, for sure.
Yes, never, I have never, ever.
Okay.
No. It's, it's basically food-grade, pharmaceutical-grade, and as I said, people don't sit in their cars and, and smoke. The people who are going in are paying a premium for that product. If they just want to get high, they can buy it, or now grow it. But the concentrations and other types of delivery for that product, they're paying, it's not cheap. It's very expensive, frankly.
For what it's worth, on that topic, I think what you have to remember too is certain aspects of this are still illegal, but as we know, people break the law. So like, right now, my understanding of the medical dispensaries is you, whatever you purchase there, it's, it's sealed. It has, not just sealed, I mean, it has like a-
Yeah, it's double, triple, quadruple, titanium.
And my understanding at least is that you can't even open that in your car if, if you are pulled over and you have it and the seal's broken, you know, that's a problem. So, but, but people break the law. That's what you have to, I mean, you can, we can only sort of assume this is how the law is supposed to work. So if your question is, you know, does it smell, it absolutely should not because the way this is supposed to work is you go to the dispensary, you buy the sealed product, you take it home, you open the seal there. Now, do people always follow the rules? No.
Melissa, I was curious, the two dispensaries that you have in Columbia, are they the same entity? Or are they two competing entities?
They're, they're competing.
Okay.
And their corporate headquarters are both based in Chicago, interestingly, but two different companies.
Are the host agreements identical?
Yes.
They are, okay.
They're on a sliding scale, and Ms. Lopinsy has a copy of those. It's a sliding scale based on gross sales, so the scale goes higher the more that the, the higher the gross sales, the higher the percent. And then there's a threshold. If they fall below a threshold of gross sales, it's a flat amount annually.
And do they give you monthly reports or annual reports?
No, they, annually, they send us a certification from their attorney, their corporate attorney, of the calculation based on the formula- their corporate attorney, of the calculation based on the formula in the agreement. And then they send the check. And then we have the option in the agreement that we can request copies of their financial records that are specific to determining that formula. So gross sales, et cetera, gross sales less taxes. And we have not yet the, chosen to do that. The amounts have been quite substantial. Potentially at five years, which would be this coming year. So in April, so...
Coming up.
Couple of weeks, week or so, we'll receive payments for 2023 ended. And so potentially at the, at the fifth year, that might be a good point to request an audit. But we haven't done that. The amounts far exceeded what we expected to receive.
Is that agreement reviewable? Can you change it?
It has built in, I didn't, I wasn't here when we put the agreement into place, but it has built in that in the event that recreational marijuana is authorized by the state that, and they choose to move into recreational marijuana, that the trustees have a right to review that. Simply because medical marijuana was a big step to start with. And so that was one level of uncertainty. And so it seemed to be a more significant level of uncertainty for recreational marijuana. And so that was in there. There are also provisions in the agreement in the event the dispensary loses its license or the dispensary goes out of business or relocates, which is more of an option, well, it's an option for either of them to relocate, but the one that is leasing it would be more likely for a lease business to relocate. The other company actually built a building from the ground up. And the lease, the company that leases just doubled its space. It took an additional unit in the same shopping center. So unless something happens unexpectedly, I don't see them going anywhere.
Based on medical marijuana sales or projected recreational marijuana expansion?
They started it over, it's a really good question. They started it, it was based on recreational sales. They require people, if they have too many people in the store, they require people to wait in their car. And so they just doubled their space so that people could come in. What they, what specifically drove it was not that. That was a secondary piece. What specifically drove it is that they, they set up kiosks. So you didn't have to wait for the one or two people who were behind the counter. Unless, if you knew what you wanted or you wanted to do an order on a kiosk, you could go to a kiosk. If you wanted to talk to the person behind the counter, you could wait and do that. But, and the kiosks take space as kiosks do, so they needed additional space. So that was the primary.
So you order and pay at the kiosk, and then when the number comes up, you go pick up your order? Just like McDonald's?
Yep.
Okay. Is this agreement open-ended or is it, I don't see an expiration?
It is open-ended. And the termination is only if they go out of business, lose their license, or relocate.
Okay.
That I recall.
Got it.
Okay.
Just, I'm not all pro or con on, because I'm not an expert on either medical marijuana or recreational marijuana. But I do know from, I did an eight-year stint at the state and working with Jobs Ohio before I came back to local government. And one of the agencies that I was responsible coordinating with for new corporate locations and relocations to the state of Ohio was the Department of Transportation. So I left in 2019 and came to Columbia Township before medical marijuana and long before recreational marijuana, just when it was pot and alcohol and opioids and such. One out of four drivers on the road is impaired. And that's based on all of the statistics from the police and from crashes and fatalities. So it is a thing that includes cell phones, alcohol, drugs. So when you're in intersection, even more so than smelling pot, which I smell, like you said that you smell now, and you look to your left, your right, and the person behind you or in front of you, and it's not you, it's one of them, statistically speaking. It's a really high ratio. So it's kind of a new culture in this society, which is unfortunate. But that was in place before medical marijuana. So. Can I help in any way?
A lot.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else that comes up? Kim and I have a red hot bone that we can... And we also, we didn't have anyone from the community. I know that that's important as well. You have a larger community than we do. We do have some active groups in the community that do follow the meetings and do comment and do, you know, share concerns on things. Nothing on this matter, ever. It was interesting. So, thank you all. It's great to see everyone.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa. Okay. So recreational marijuana dispensaries and what it could potentially look like. And I'm assuming that's you or who is that?
That's not me.
Yeah, two gentlemen in the audience. Okay.
My turn?
I thought it might be them. Oh, legal aspect.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have it up on the screen too.
Thank you for bringing that up. Very nice.
So this is the, this is the company.
How you guys doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Thank you for taking the time to invite me to this meeting. My name's Zach Webberin. I'm a local entrepreneur. I'm originally from Dayton, Ohio. I started my first business in downtown Cincinnati in 2010, where I opened up a fast casual sushi restaurant called Fusion. I scaled that company to about 15 restaurants across the state of Ohio, including three in the city of Cincinnati. We just opened our fourth, I guess, our 14th location over in Anderson Township. We have one in Hyde Park Plaza, and we have one on Montgomery Road in Kenwood, where we've been operating that business for years. Fast forward about 10 years later, when the medical program is created here in Ohio through cannabis, my father, who's also a multi-generational entrepreneur who grew up in the auto parts industry, we ultimately applied for a Level 1 cultivation and processing license through the medical program when the law was created back in 2017. We ultimately won a Level 1 license and processing license. Fast forward a few years later, we retrofitted a 100,000 square foot warehouse, invested over $20 million building a world-class indoor cultivation facility. We are one of the few locally owned operators left in the market. We sell, we sell, grow flour. We have a whole extraction lab in there where we have a whole line of goods from flour to edibles to vape cartridges to drinks. We currently sell our product in the 125 dispensaries that are open across the entire state of Ohio, including the ones in Columbia Township, which are two of our better customers and two of the higher-bond locations across the market.
Okay, so you're a cultivator and supplier in addition to a dispenser?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're selling product right now in the medical marijuana field to the two dispensaries in Columbia?
Outside is the specific ownership group that is running next door on Ridge Avenue. My company is their number one vendor, as well as the store down the street from that.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
Yep. We currently employ 130 people in our facility. I'd love to invite you all up into our facility, take a tour, put you in a Tivex suit and see how professional and world-class these operations are. We've been building this company for about five years. Like I said, we have 130 employees. We anticipate employing another 350 across the market over the next two to three years. The state of Ohio with the medical program as it is today, there's about 129 dispensaries opening that are currently open. With the law transitioning to adult use, there'll probably be somewhere around 300. So there'll be an expansion from 129 up to 300. We, I'm currently looking at a property on Montgomery Road. It's 12065 Montgomery Road, the urgent care. We're trying, looking to acquire and convert it into a dispensary that would be a medical use and a adult use dispensary.
No cultivation?
No cultivation. Our wholesale operation will stay in Dayton, Ohio. We are in the middle of expanding that operation, adding an additional 120,000 square feet. That's another probably 15-plus million dollar investment up there. We'll be expanding our cultivation, increasing our product line to meet the demand as the market expands across the state of Ohio. This, the presentation just kind of lays out some images of our wholesale operation, a little bit of the story that's about my father, myself, and our partners. You can see a few images of what the facility looks like on the inside. You can see, page four just talks about how our brand certified is well-respected. The product moves very fast and we're one of the best brands in the entire market as it is today.
Can I just question, is this urgent care the only property that you're looking at in Sims Township?
In Sims Township, yes. I, we will, our company will be opening somewhere between five to eight dispensaries across the state in the next two to three years. Very, having done business in Cincinnati for years, I operate a restaurant down the street. I've been building community in this market for a very long time. I believe that reinvesting in Cincinnati and what we've been doing and the relationships that I've built, I'm very excited for the opportunity to partner with you guys on this. We've been working in Mason at the tennis tournament for the last 10 years. Been going to it my whole life. So I know this area very well. And it's, you know, I was grateful for the opportunity for Kim to invite me back to the meeting and talk to you guys a little bit about what we're learning about the industry.
Are you open to other locations or this is it or nothing?
I'm absolutely open to other locations. They're very complicated to find. There's a 500-foot rule that you can't be within a school, a childcare facility, libraries, public parks. There's also a new rule where you actually can't be within one mile of an existing location. So those two sites that she was referring to in Columbia Township, those are grandfathered in because they exist already today, but they're within one mile of each other. So there's going to be this complicated process as they release all these new dispensaries that you can't be within one mile of each other. Partially for me coming here to meet you guys, to develop a relationship with you, to understand that we are locally owned. We're not some publicly traded company that owns those two company, those two locations in Columbia Township. Those are, there's a lot of publicly traded cannabis companies that operate out of Chicago that do business here. So we ultimately compete with majority of the multi-state operators in the market. There's a handful of us that are left that are still locally owned. So I do believe that establishing a relationship with you, understanding that I've been doing business here for 15 years will help kind of develop that relationship. But I'm absolutely open to any locations, but they're just a little tricky to find. And as more people try to also apply in that same site, then there is some form of lottery system if multiple people apply within the same distance, within a mile of each other. You might not necessarily get one if somebody, I could go into a little bit more deeper details to how they're trying to do the drawing process. But that all takes place in June and July where we need to have our submissions in place. I have a property ready to go. I have a contract ready to sign. It's a purchase contract. I plan to buy the property. I plan to develop it. Having spent 15 years in the restaurant industry, understanding retail, cannabis is ironically a very similar industry for people that have been in the food and beverage and hospitality industry. If you ever talk to a, I could go into more detail about that, but I don't need to. But yeah, we have a specific site in mind that I'm looking to put it on track.
And I'm sorry, what was the Montgomery Road address?
It's the urgent care, 12065 Montgomery Road. I'm also trying to buy the piece of land next door that's owned by McCloskey. I was actually just talking to John McCullough. He mentioned your name. He's like, I told him I was going to the Sims Township meeting and he's like, oh, Kim over there? I was like, yep, yep. So I planned to go meet with him as well.
The little triangle one?
Yeah, I want to buy the triangle and connect it into the urgent care. And my goal would be to establish at least 50 parking spaces and put a drive-through in if possible. We're putting drive-throughs in most of our locations across the market. So if I can somehow buy that piece of land next door, also put a drive-through in, have, you know, 50 parking spaces, it could be a really good retail experience. People will be in and out. You guys were asking some questions. There's, the law is very specific about onsite consumption. None of that happens. These things are highly, there's a ton of security. The state has access to all the cameras involved. There's probably maybe 50, 60, 70 cameras within one 5,000 square foot building. So these things are highly secure, just people in and out. So our goal would be to get people in and out as quickly as possible. So that's what she was talking about with kiosks and whatnot, which is why the Sunnyside expanded their footprint because they can't keep up with demand. Sales will be very high in this location. And, you know, it's, the medical program in Ohio, we've been selling to about 160, 170,000 patients across the market. When adult use sales start, that goes from about 170,000 people making purchases across the market and 120 dispensaries to 3 million people overnight.
And the typical person that would use your establishment would be 40 years old, male? What is it?
Yeah, it's funny. You know, the highest growing demographic in cannabis right now is everybody in this room. What? It's us. I get, I get calls all the time from friends, family, all the time. And one of the biggest things is for sleep. People eat gummies for sleeping. It helps them sleep. It's better than consuming alcohol. It's, I could go on and on. I was diagnosed with Crohn's disease when I was 12 years old. I've been dealing with that both physically, mentally, my whole life. So I've been an advocate of cannabis my whole life. My dad's been talking about it around the dinner table, you know, for years. And over time, as the laws have shifted, you know, Ohio's the 24th state in the United States that approved, had voted in an adult use program. 65% of people in Hamilton County voted yes. It was a 57% across the entire state of Ohio. There's 38 states in the entire country now that have some form of adult use and medical program. Pennsylvania is now talking. They, their medical program has far exceeded Ohio's. Ohio had competing pharmacy and commerce were competing. One was pro-business and trying to build the program. One was against it. So the Ohio medical program never really took off. So we, the medical program has underperformed. We have 160,000 patients, whereas Pennsylvania has 700,000 patients. Pennsylvania will create an adult use program very soon after Ohio because they will lose a lot of business to Ohio. Michigan currently is a $3 billion market with 2 million less people than Ohio. My friends and as a, when I started this business, I had no experience in, I had no experience in cannabis, just like I did in the sushi business, but I figured out how to run a business. And it was, it's been a wild journey ever since. But I made a lot of friends up in Michigan. And they say of the $3 billion in sales that they're doing today, at least 800 to a billion of that will come back to Ohio. People from Ohio drive up to Michigan to buy product and then bring it back down here because of pricing, because of convenience, whatever. So as the supply and demand curve changes over time, you know, you'll see more, less people going up to Michigan, keeping that tax revenue, that business here in Ohio. And all the Ohio operators will continue to expand, expand the market that's being created here in Ohio. So.
Okay.
So Zach, this location on Montgomery, so this is between Union Cemetery and Fields Earle, right? It's just right out here?
Yeah, it's right around the corner.
Yes.
Right next to the mulch place, the...
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So now I'm curious. I have to get my odometer and drive a mile from that location. But I would guess that, for example, the other end of Fields Earle, still in Sims Township, closer to 71, that would be more than a mile away or going south, going south on Montgomery?
It is as the crow flies. As of today, there are no other dispensaries in, within a mile or anywhere in Sims Township.
I'm just saying, that would be a, that would be a potential location. It would still be open as a potential.
Yeah, I mean, I'm...
Or due south on Montgomery, a mile, you'd still be in Sims Township or down at Lovelamadera.
Like the CVS that's empty. I always keep pushing that place.
Yeah, I mean, quite honestly, my one main objective... Yeah, I mean, quite honestly, my, my one main objective is to, to either create some form of, of relationship with you guys where you're willing to, to allow us in and whether that site works or another site, I'm happy to go somewhere else. I just love the opportunity to do business in Sims Township. You know, whether it's conditional approval or not, it gives me the confidence to invest hard money on putting these properties in contract, which then will hopefully give me the opportunity to, to win the license come, come June. If 10 different people apply, then if you guys say yes and allow everybody to apply, then you might be competing with 10 different companies. And if three companies apply within one mile, they'll put us into a lottery system and then just kind of pick one of us. So you won't actually be able to pick the site potentially. It could be one of the three. If you allow for a conditional approval for just us, then we won't have that one mile issue and then we'll get the location that we want. And that's where I'm willing to invest hard money to, to go through that process, to, to, to know that I'll get the site that I'm working on. So my main objective is to establish a conditional approval where it gives me the confidence to risk the money, putting the property in contract, which leads me down the path to making, making it happen come June when Department of Commerce actually goes throughout this process.
So if Columbia has these two locations right around the corner from each other and they're both doing apparently very well, why, I'm just curious, why wouldn't you be saying, I want to put three locations in Sims Township?
Well, I'm, I'm only, I don't need, my goal is to have maybe one or two locations in this market. I don't, those two companies that are in Columbia Township are two separate companies competing with each other. If somebody else applies and, and you guys want to work with and somebody else comes in Sims Township, I'm okay with that. I'm not, I'm not trying to just put myself in and not let somebody else in. Because as long as I'm within a mile, like I, I would hope that I can figure out a way to, to cover the mile distance. But if you put two or three dispensaries in Sims Township, I would never tell you not to because, you know, I, I believe in free market and competition. And one thing I have learned is that once you're in this industry, it's much like any other business. It's, it's just like competition and, you know, I learned this in the restaurant industry and I made friends with other restaurant operators that are running businesses to help us learn best practices and how to run a great business. And at the end of the day, you can't eat at the same place twice every single day. So I'm happy with competition. Our brand and our product has far exceeded all of our competitors. So the other competitors don't really, you know, I don't really pay attention to that. So if you were able to put two or three in your, in your market and as long as I still get mine, I'm thrilled. We'll ultimately probably sell our product in those stores as well. So, you know, we, we will call it certified. This will be a branded certification. Every business kind of has a slightly different business model, but if you guys did two or three stores, then, then so be it. I just, hopefully can get mine.
So would your store only sell your cultivated products or would you also sell competitors' products?
We will sell ours as well as our competitors. As the market shifts, you know, depending on supply and demand, it's going to, there's going to be a shortage of supply when adult use sales start. Some people may disagree. That's just my opinion because I've understood and studied this business every single day for the last five years. So as supply and demand shifts, you know, you have to manage your menu. These menus are changing over every single day rapidly. We anticipate seeing 500 to 1,000 customers a day. It could be a very high volume experience. So there's a lot of revenue generated in this business. So as, as additional, as the wholesalers continue to expand their businesses over the next several years as the market expands, that what we carry in our stores will shift in terms of how much we carry of our own and how much we carry of, of our, of our other wholesalers. You know, a market like Illinois, which I think we're a very similar market to, that's been in adult use for almost four years now. Their first year of going adult use was like, they did like 600 million in revenue. They weren't fully built out. And then year two, they did 900 and then year three, they did like 1.4 billion. So I believe Ohio is going to be a $2 billion market. It won't be there starting this summer or fall when it starts. It'll take two or three years for everybody to, to build out. There is, with issue two, there's a, there's a clause or however it's written that there won't be additional wholesalers being licensed for at least two years post the day adult use sales start. So as the market gets developed, like these facilities cost a lot of money to build and it's very expensive. These businesses are extremely difficult to operate and to run profitably. So there's a couple of years where it's just only going to be dispensaries opening. There won't be additional cultivation. There won't be additional processing. So from your guys' standpoint, you're not going to be looking at adding new grows in this, in, in your township. It would strictly be dispensaries. So if you're looking at adding a couple, you know, there's, you know, that's 100% doable. I can also introduce you to people that might be interested in, in doing it as well. I know everybody in space.
But you would only be interested in one?
I will tell you, I was driving around, looking around more of Sims Township to see if there are other opportunities. The sites are hard to find. You know, I, I know a lot of people looking across the entire city of Cincinnati and the way with the mile use, the mile rules and all the moratoriums, these, these locations are challenging to find. I will also tell you that there will be a lot of people driving from Kentucky over the border and coming and bringing a ton of revenue to Ohio because that's what's happening in every market across, you know, the country.
For a while, didn't they just pass an approval over there that?
There isn't that program.
To be grown in Kentucky?
Uh, I'm sorry, what?
I think that Kentucky is going in that direction, but it's requiring it to be grown in Kentucky.
Yeah, so there, there, there are no more, there, all the cannabis industries are all state specific. So you cannot take cannabis across state borders. People obviously do it, but each cannabis program is specific to their state. In the future, you know, there are states that are trying to create this kind of interstate commerce with cannabis, but I think we're years away. I also do think, you know, people have been saying this for a while. I think you're seeing the president, the vice president not talking about it in their speeches about how cannabis is becoming, they're ready to legalize it. It's part of their campaign. I'm being told that, that the DEA is going to come out and change the schedule from a Schedule I drug to a Schedule III drug. It could be as early as April. With that becomes the eventual release of 280E, which is the taxes system that doesn't allow us to tax our businesses like a normal business. That ultimately will continue to make businesses stronger from a capital standpoint, a better, more sustainable businesses. It helps the larger companies as well and all of that in long-term fights against the, the black market, which is thriving across the entire country, thrives in the biggest markets. And people are consuming cannabis, whether they're buying it legally or not. That's probably one of the biggest reasons why this demographic is the highest, the fastest growing demo for cannabis because now they feel safe. They can walk into a dispensary, buy a product that they know has been tested multiple times. They know exactly what they're getting. You know, I was, I was in a meeting with the governor and a bunch of the other business owners in the, in the state at a fundraiser about a year and a half ago and I'm trying to talk to the governor about cannabis. And got all these people in the room. I was by far the youngest person in the room. And, and when it came to me, I started talking about Crohn's and how it's, it's helped me with my Crohn's and, you know, it helps me go to the bathroom. It helps relax my system and, and helps me, my things go through my body and allows me to go to the bathroom. So the medicinal purposes are, are endless. And once I started saying that, everybody else in the room started talking about it as well. So the medicinal components to, to cannabis are, are endless. People are using it for nausea. People are using it for treating cancer. It doesn't help any of those things go away, but people use it for different reasons to treat symptoms. So, yeah, I think, well, close.
It's a, it's a, it's just like any other, it's a, like he said, it's a crutch. It's not, it's not solving problems. It's...
Oh, doesn't, it, it absolutely doesn't, you know, it's not curing cancer by any means. But if it helps you deal with your nausea or if it helps you fall asleep and get a six hour or eight hours versus sleep versus four, then people seem, seem to like it. So it's...
So let me put you on the spot.
Absolutely.
Because this is all new for me. But so from your perspective in the business, how many dispensaries in Sims Township would be too many?
How many? We decide.
Well, I'm just wondering before they start taking too much business. So how many McDonald's in Sims Township? Well, we've got a couple.
What's the, how far, top like north and south, east and west?
Field Zertl.
And what's the, what's the mileage?
It used to be like six square miles.
I mean, you guys could fit two or three for sure.
The issue for me is when medical marijuana was agreed to, okay, the state limited how many dispensaries there were and how many were in Hamilton County, correct? Now, are they going to do that when it comes to the expansion to recreational marijuana? We don't know how many is going to be allowed and where they're going to be allowed.
Well, I will...
For us to even gauge.
You're, I mean, you're not going to get more than a couple in Sims Township. The way, the, the process is working is getting split it up to a phase one approach that starts this June and a phase two, okay? So I can go a little deeper. As a level one cultivator, we have access to three licenses minimum. One which is going out in a phase one approach and the second two are phase two. The phase one is we ultimately can put it anywhere in the state that we want, as long as we're not within a mile of somebody else. And we meet the 500 foot rule. So that's going to spread out a bunch. The phase two and three ultimately get put into specific districts across the state. We don't know exactly what those are yet, but the new director of the, of the cannabis program came from alcohol and one of the main objectives is to spread these dispensaries out across the entire state. So they're not all congregated in, in the big markets. I will tell you, to answer your question, whatever you say, there's probably not going to be enough. There will, they, these stores will be very busy. Cincinnati's a great market. We sell a lot of product down here. So it's just based on the fact of how many square miles it is, you're only going to fit two or three, especially because the real estate's so hard to find. But I can help, I can help figure that out with you, whether it's on the spot or not. But I'm happy to kind of dig deeper into the actual, you know, I can, I'll scour every single building in Sims Township to help kind of create that if that's what you want.
I think, on that note, I think what, what you could do is if you, if you look at the restrictions that are already in place, if you took a map of Sims Township and you put a dot on every school, church, park, you know, all those things and then drew a 500 foot circle around that.
It's not, there's not a lot of options.
Right. That, that sort of limits what's available. Then really if you start crossing out, you know, residential neighborhoods, you know, get rid of that, I think you're going to find the statutory restrictions are going to limit it itself. And then once you get one.
There's only a handful of groups that...
Then there's another, then there's a mile circle around that. And it is just by the, by the statute, it's, it's, and the geography here, you're going to be somewhat limited.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, are you from another dispensary?
No, I'm...
You're with, you're together. Okay, because I wanted to make sure.
He just makes me look good.
I didn't want to make sure that you got a chance to speak to. Okay.
Yeah, I talk a lot. I'm sorry.
No, it's good.
No, I want, my, yeah, my goal is to help answer as many questions as possible. If I don't know the answer, I'll go find it. But...
I just had three other questions.
Keep going.
They're short.
Yeah.
I think you already answered this, but the dispensary you have in mind would sell both medical and recreation marijuana. That would be the intent?
That would be the intent. That's correct.
And where did you say your cultivation, that's in Dayton?
Our facility's in Dayton. It's about a mile down the road from the Air Force Base. You know, when I did something similar to this on RFA two, which was the second round of applications, I was working on something up in Lima, Ohio and had a very interesting interaction several times with the city council. But ultimately was able to get several of the city council people into our facility, meet our team. Our doors are wide open. We thoroughly enjoy people coming to visit to see it, to understand it, to, to, to really see what's going on. And it's not some, you know, plants being grown in a basement here. This is a world-class operation, a fully automated irrigation, irrigation system. You know, a lot of science behind this, creating these products that are third-party tested many times throughout the life cycle of, of plants, from the beginning to the end, from extraction to the growth to the plants when they're harvested and tested. And all of the, you know, child resistant rules and all that stuff, the packaging, the signage and marketing, all that stuff is, is bulletproof and been, you know, vetted out through Department of Commerce, through the issue. Like all that stuff's been kind of worked on. So now I'm...
I would like a tour. I'd like to set up a tour. I think that would be very...
What are you doing tomorrow?
Can't do it tomorrow. I will definitely call you because I would like a tour.
I would, I would, I would love it. I would, yeah, please. Everybody's welcome. Feel free to bring family members, whatever, whatever, whoever you want to bring. I would, I'll... Our, our doors are wide open. I look forward to that.
Okay.
I was just going to ask if, no, I asked two questions. My third question was, are you familiar with this host agreement concept and are you open to that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't fully understand exactly how it was, it was written because you can't do percentages of sales is the way I understand it. But I'm, I'm, as long as the lawyers say everything is, is okay, I listen to them. So I'm at, I, I'm your partner. I want, that's why I'm here. I want to establish that relationship. And I believe that in the long run, that will only help us as a locally owned operator to develop that relationship. So yes, the answer is yes. And I don't know exactly how the lawyers will write it, but that's why they get paid the big bucks. So.
There you go.
The answer's yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, great, great info.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay, legal aspect. Now it's your turn.
Okay. Well, I, I tell you, a lot of the stuff that I had highlighted, we've really all, we've, we've touched on quite a bit of it already. I'll just kind of scroll through some of my notes here and make sure we addressed it. I mean, we, we already talked about the 500 foot thing that, by the way, that's churches, public libraries, public playgrounds, public parks or schools. So put a dot on all those things and that. So you've got that.
What would be the best way about creating that map that you described? County?
Choice one do it for us.
I can do it.
Choice one?
He just volunteered.
Somebody's probably already started that.
Planning, planning, developing. It'd be interesting. That would help me find if any other properties are available.
Just know that there's a CVS down on Lovelle Madeira that's...
Went out of business.
Yeah, went out, CVSs are all closing up and it's right on our, it's our side of the street, but it's already got a pharmacy, you know, counter in the back and everything.
Yeah, and there's a school, but I think the school's more than a mile down the road.
Well, not that little.
500 feet. I thought it was a mile. No.
Daycare, but Montgomery wasn't 500 feet.
Yes, across the street, right in the corner.
Car wash. Right, yeah, right across the street.
You'd be surprised how many schools and parks and, and they're, they're everywhere, which is, which, which is great because it makes it more friendly to find great opportunities.
What about daycares?
Daycares are, there's a lot of daycares out there. You can't use the 500 foot of daycare.
And there's also that, that little strip mall that's right off of 71. There's a car dealership. Do you know what I'm talking about? What's that? You know where Red Wing is?
Yeah, the auto lot that's right there?
Yeah.
It's a...
That's all empty too, I think.
That's...
No, it's not all empty anymore.
You're talking about, they're affiliated with...
There's an Amerisop right there on Fields Earl, right there at Escort Drive and...
Quick Lane. Quick Lane Cars, Car Loans and...
They're on the other side.
Well, I, I think it might be a helpful exercise if you, if you've had a map. I mean, when, when you look at the map of the township up there and start to identify those places and, and it really is...
Such a weird shape of the township.
Yeah, we are.
I was just having...
Annexation.
You know, you know what that is? That's a T-bone steak with the filet missing.
Is that from Tony's?
Doesn't it look like it?
So this, everything here and here, that's all, that's all sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you look at this one, it tells you the tail on the T-bone.
Yeah, but, but I, I think it is, it would be a beneficial exercise because if you, if you went through and you just put a dot on all of those, what are called prohibited locations in the statute and you drew, I mean, I think it's, it's 500 feet from parcel line to parcel line, I think is how it describes it. So.
Does it maybe adjusting that a little bit where it's actually from parcel on one side to the building?
To building, okay. Because I think right now it's, it's parcel line to parcel line, but...
There's also like, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there a neighborhood restriction too?
No.
Neighborhood, you mean?
Yeah, not, and they can't put it in the middle of the neighborhood.
Parks, schools, public libraries, daycare centers, churches, bodyguards.
I, I would say, I mean, it's, it's not going to go in a neighborhood anyway because from, just strictly from a zoning perspective, you know, if, if you do nothing else, if you take no action, do nothing, it's going to be treated as essentially like a retail operation. So from a...
It's, it's really all it is. It's honestly, from a, from a retail standpoint, running restaurants is, is challenging from the standpoint that I'm focused on making rice and cutting tuna and managing teams well. And in these situations, it's really...
that I'm focused on making rice and cutting tuna and managing teams well. And in these situations, it's really just bringing stuff in the back door for deliveries and then it's already prepackaged and then you just manage the team, get it out the front door. So it's about-
Retail business. Or just a retail business.
Yeah, it's just another retail business.
And it would be governed under, uh, the zoning restrictions for retail. I mean, it, it couldn't be in a residential neighborhood because our residential zoning doesn't permit retail operating. Doesn't matter if it's that kind of retail operation or any kind of retail operation.
Perhaps you guys could help me with, uh, getting the little weird triangle lot with the plus key. And we can add that as to an efficient site plan and get it directed there as well.
Um, just as I keep going through my notes, I mean, the other thing was we were, I had was the, the 10% tax thing. I, I don't know. I mean, I think you guys all have a handle on that.
It's kind of interesting if you start looking at dollars.
But it, and it's hard to say how the dollar, what, what those dollars would be.
I can speak a little bit on that.
Turns out it'd be like 36% into the community fund or whatever of the 10% current tax is only 3.6% of gross sales, right?
Yeah, the 3.6%.
Yeah. I mean, it's, think of it like that. There's a, there's a 10% tax that comes off and it all goes up to the state. The state divides that into a couple of different places.
Do you think 3.6% goes to you?
No, you-
The way I read it-
It goes in a pot and then it's distributed out.
Right. Thirty, 36% of the 10% tax is allocated back to the host communities.
Host community, host community cannabis facilities fund.
You won't know how much you're getting.
Well, I can assure you that number's going to be large.
Yeah. But, but right now you won't, you, there's no way to know because that distribution, it says it's based on the percentage of adult use tax attributable to each municipal corporation or township. So if, if the Sims Township location is the hottest, biggest-
We're not getting any more money.
No, you, you would get a bigger chunk of that, of that, of that percent.
If I can obviously make a, another pitch for myself over here, I can't help it, but we do have, if you ask, if you start asking people that have any idea what's wrong with the industry, we say, we bias, our brand is separated itself from other brands. Um, so the brand really plays a big role into, into driving business. And the fact that this would be our brand and store, um, would only elevate us and help us drive business compared to guys next door. So I can assure you that even if you get two or three dispensaries in, in this, in this market, in one of mine, I'm pretty sure mine would be the top, the high volume.
So, so keep in mind, I mean, that's what the statute says right now. Um, we've, we've mentioned this before, that there have been a few bills introduced that would make some, some changes to that. Um, I think one of them increases the, proposed to increase the 10% to, I forget if it was 12 or 15.
15.
So the taxes are, it seems to be by far the most controversial, um, issue with the entire issue two. Uh, from everything that we're hearing from the people that, the insiders on all this, that House and Senate are not talking.
Right.
So issue two is going to kind of ultimately get accomplished as it's written, um, which can change down the road as it goes in, into, it, it, as it happens.
Yeah.
They're anticipating, um, adult use sales actually starting as possibly as early as July for existing medical dispensaries. Um, we don't know if that's a hundred percent going to happen, but we are anticipating, um, uh, adult use sales to start, um, in, at the latest by September 1st or October 1st, if it happens in.
My advice to, to, to you and to all of my other public sector clients is that you, you need to just proceed based on the statute that was approved by the voters. There were a whole bunch of bills to change this and to change that. They've all stalled in various committees or they're dying, you know, and, and yeah, the House and the Senate are not talking about this. So whatever decisions you want to make, you should make it based on what the current version of the statute is. Knowing that that could change, just like any statute could change in the future. But that brings me to sort of my last big point. And we've talked about this already, but it's probably worth repeating. So what exactly is the township's authority under this new statute? Well, we've talked about this. Here's what you can do. And it's actually, it's pretty simple. You can adopt a resolution that prohibits, you can adopt a, a resolution that limits the number of, or, or really you can do nothing.
Or we can allow it in a certain area and not-
Well, that's through zoning, that's through our zoning authority. And like I said, right now, i- if you did nothing, it would just be treated as any other retail, uh, and we're talking about dispensaries, um, that would be treated as a, as a retail.
Where it could possibly be in Sims Township first off.
Well, right. But, but that's something, um, that we could, that you can address through zoning. Um, although I think that extra, the map exercise would be helpful because I think you might realize there aren't as many places as you thought. So anyway, my, my point is you can, you have the authority to say, no, we're going to prohibit, um, these operations. You have the authority to limit the number. You can say, we're okay with it, but there's only going to be one or two or three or-
A maximum number.
What, yeah, you can set a maximum number. So, so that's your authority about what you can do. But I think it's important to mention just a couple of things that the statute specifically says you are prohibited from doing. One of which is, and we haven't, there hasn't really been any discussion of this and it's not entirely relevant to what we're talking about. But you are prohibited, you cannot prohibit or limit the home grow portion of the statute. And I know right now we're mostly talking about the, the business side of it. But under the statute, you can't change anything about the home grow, the, um, the home grow rules. You can't prohibit or restrict any activity that's otherwise authorized under this, um, statute. So you can't make, uh, more specific or more onerous rules about it. For example, you can't, in Sims Township, we can't change the amount that you're allowed to have. And, yeah, well, that, that you can grow or that you can purchase or that you can carry or that you can possess. So can't do that.
Backing up to what our yes or no number of things that we can decide, the number and location may be limited based on other facts.
Right.
Okay. But, uh, can we limit cultivation?
Yes, you can. You, what, what we're talking about, what your authority here, it has to do with adult use cannabis operators. And that's a big umbrella term that includes the, um, cultivators, the processors, the dispensaries. You can do all that. It, that's another exercise, I think, and I think you could probably speak to it better than I can. The, the, uh, commercial cultivation, um, operation, I don't know where you would even-
Isn't that agricultural? Is it zoned agricultural?
What I'm saying is I'm not sure.
You know that?
Um, I don't know where you would even be able to do.
We're, we're limited in space.
Oh, yeah. Ours, ours is operating in a warehouse and you wouldn't even, honestly, you would, you actually-
But, but could you, could you buy out, let's say a big box store and-
Yeah, there's a big box. Yeah. Yeah, you could. There's, there's one in Ford Park in, in Cincinnati.
Okay. So it's zone manufacturing, not agricultural.
Uh, that, I think so. I'm not a hundred percent.
Well, it's, it's the general zoning, you know, some of these zoning, the bigger zoning categories include things like-
All I know is Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not agricultural.
Because when we look at our zoning map, there's not a lot of agricultural locations.
It's also not, uh, something that you would need to address until, uh, most likely 24 months from, uh, this, this summer, but most likely 24 months from this October. So the state, uh, the way that issue two was written, there'll be additional dispensaries opening from 130 to probably 300 or so. But there won't be additional cultivators and additional processing license. The state will evaluate the program, the supply and demand curve as it, as the program gets built over the next two years. And then at that point, they can make a decision whether or not they will go out for additional licensing.
Yeah. And then the, the last thing, the big ticket thing that, that, that came up tonight, and we can talk through this, is, so let's back up to what Columbia Township was, was talking about on this host community agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not exactly sure of all the timing on everything that Columbia Township did. And by the way, I know Columbia Township's, uh, law director, they have excellent legal representation. I've read the agreements that they drafted. They're very well done. What I'm saying is the, the statutes have changed. So when the medical marijuana statute first went into effect, um, there was, it, it didn't address that issue at all. And I think Columbia Township was wise and they did whatever they did and worked out these agreements with, with those two particular businesses. Later, the, my understanding is the medical marijuana statute was amended to add some language that essentially says you're not allowed to levy special fees or taxes, um, against those kind of operations.
But it can be voluntary.
Well, hold on, hold on. So, so that's under the medical stuff. And then when you get to the new, um, statute for the adult use statute, it says that this board is prohibited from levying any tax fee or charge on adult use cannabis operators, their owners or their property, which is not generally charged on other businesses in the municipal corporation or township.
Yep. I read that.
And that, that language was not in the original, uh, medical marijuana statute. I think it is now.
I don't think that there is any way for town, local governments to get any funding. Was it in the original?
No, it was not, it was not set up the way this, the way it is set up.
Yeah, that's what I asked Columbia Township.
So, so here's what I'm going to say. Under, under the statute, it says what it says. Does that prohibit two parties from voluntarily entering into any kind of an agreement? I mean, I think what it says is you cannot, you cannot impose that on an operator. You cannot say to an operator, we're not going to allow you here unless you do, unless you sign this agreement.
Right.
Uh, but two parties are always allowed to enter into an arms-length agreement that addresses whatever topic they want to address.
Okay.
And that's probably all I can really say about that.
Okay. I have a follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I want to add to your action list. The first, if we're considering this, one of the first things we need to do, we have a resolution on the books that prohibits medical marijuana.
Yes.
So we need to rescind that resolution.
Well, I was going to mention that, that yes, this was back in 17, I guess, 17, 16. Um, yeah, you, and, and again, I, this is before my time, before Kim's, before your time too, right? Um, but yeah, we, we have looked back at that and it looks like at the time you did a moratorium like almost everyone did because nobody understood what was happening. And then you did make the decision to prohibit, um, medical marijuana operations. So yes, if you're considering, um, moving forward with something now, you will need to go back and address that. If the board's intention is to say, well, we're going to prohibit the adult use dispensaries too, well, then you can leave the old one the same. But it's, that's, it's up to the board. You'll have to, if you're going to move forward with allowing them, um, especially if we're talking to a potential user that would like to do both. We're going to, we would have to address that.
Right. So then my other thought, question, comment, whatever, um, you know, we're a public entity. And I think we've received emails from three interested parties.
There'd be more than that now, but it's three.
Now it's three.
Well, it's three.
So with all due respect, um, if we took a step back and we, and this is, I'm just thinking out loud. If we advertised a request for proposal in Sims Township, then we could receive proposals from interested entities and they could use that as a vehicle to include a draft host agreement voluntarily as part of their proposal.
I think I'm going to let you speak.
I think we first need to decide who we're going to deal with.
Well, actually, no, you should not decide who you're going to deal with. Really, the, the threshold question for the board first is just look at the statute. Your authority is you can prohibit them or you can permit them. And by permitting them, you can limit the number. That's your first, that's your first decision point.
Yes, we get that.
Um, and if you're going to permit them, whether it's one or two or three, or whatever the number is that the board thinks is appropriate, that's really the extent of what the board would do.
Okay. So I think the first thing we need to do before we decide how many, we have to see if there's enough locations for say two or say one or, you know, we don't even know, you know.
I think that's a helpful exercise for sure.
Right. So before we could even determine how many we want, we have to make sure that we can house two, we can house three or one or whatever.
Hypothetically, you can do more than one because our borders are, are, are further apart than one mile. So it's conceivable. You just don't know if you-
Well, it's, it's conceivable, but again, just because they're more than a mile apart, doesn't mean there could be churches and parks and playgrounds and all kinds of stuff around there that, that, that limit that. I, I guess my, my, my only point was this is not really an opportunity for the township to solicit proposals. This is, your statutory authority is are we going to permit them or not? And if you choose to yes, permit them and, and perhaps limit the number, um.
Or the location.
Well, and the location, and again, the-
Because we can limit the location based on-
You can, but that would be through a zoning action. Keep in mind too, that, um, the, your ability to prohibit or to limit the number can be done. That's not a zoning issue. That's just a flat out, you pass a resolution that says, we permit two or we prohibit all or, and then it's done.
Okay.
Then you have to decide if you want to take a further step to make any adjustments to your zoning map or code to say, now that we've permitted them, um, they are only permitted uses in the blank district. And, you know, that's, that's, then that would just follow the normal zoning process of just like any other zoning code amendment.
I get that. But let's go back a step to what you just said. Let's say hypothetically, we take action to limit it to two. My question is, how do we get to the two?
Well, I think the simple answer is we wouldn't get to the two. The state of Ohio would get to the two.
No, how do we decide who we want to come in?
You don't decide who, who comes in.
Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it's a pre-very.
That's what you were relating to before.
It's, it's, it's first come, first served and who can find property, you put in contract and it's like, then it's, it goes from there. So it's-
Yeah, that, that's part of your application to the state, right?
Yeah.
We want to come in, here's where we'll project.
My application with the state, um, they, when I say I want this to be my phase one and I want to put my store right here, um, they operate with the assumption that I've checked all the boxes on all zoning and local townships.
Right.
So if you guys decide you want one store, if I, if, and I have mine in contract, it could be it and that be done. That could work out that way. If you decide you want two stores, um, I put mine in contract. I will also probably go look for other sites if I can find something. I might be able to put in contract. I might not be able to. Other people may look. They may try. And then it could be, you know, luck of the draw, maybe you get me, maybe you get them. But if you do do that and you're, you're, you might, you very well could end up working, dealing with people that aren't from this area, that aren't local. Um, most of the people that I do know that are looking are from, from Chicago or from Missouri and from Michigan. A lot of these companies are out of town operators. So by the way, I received the email from Kim. I was appreciative that he recognized that I was from Dayton, um, that I could drive down here kind of last minute and, and be here for this. So, um, you know, to some degree, we're always going to try to push, have some type of local advantage. Those two licenses that were in, that are in Columbia Township, those two companies that own those were not the original winners of those licenses. The original winners of those licenses were other people that sold those businesses to these large publicly traded companies because that's what these large publicly traded companies do. They operate and try to build more assets in a bunch of different states and, and then- bunch of different states and, and then very big yogurt running them across the board, you know, it's like, running 10 restaurants is a lot harder than running three, but being a local brand, it did really help, so, um, you will always have an advantage as a local operator, so I'm grateful for the invitation, I'm grateful to be here, um, and for the opportunity to establish a relationship with you guys, hopefully we only choose one.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so monetary gains we basically talked about already, so any additional information that anybody has?
No, I mean, the only other things I had highlighted are, are not really relevant to this, it was more about things like the chief, uh, fire chief brought up about rights of employers and, and things like that, but that's probably not much, I don't know if that weighs on your decision for this at all.
And I, I know that you, I'd like to open it up just for public comment, do you have public comment, can you tell us your name and address and?
I'm Suzie Lindgren and I live at 11611 Thistle Hill Drive, just around the corner, and, um, over the last couple of years, I've heard, um, from, uh, from friends of their friends going up to Michigan to, um, get edibles and, um, in the last year, in traveling for events to Michigan and also, um, Missouri, um, as a kind of a novelty exercise, um, I've gone into some dispensaries with friends and, um, the first question that came up tonight from what I heard was about safety and robberies, and these dispensaries are very, um, well set up with, they all have security, well, I haven't been to all of them, but the ones that I have visited have security guards there and security systems and they only allow so many people in at one time, once someone exits, then another person can go in, and one, um, even had a metal detector where people had to walk through, so, um, these businesses, they do deal with a lot of money on a daily basis and they're very interested in not being robbed, so they're going to, um, do whatever it takes to, um, keep robberies from happening, um, again, there's a lot of profit that can be, um, a lot of income that can be recognized by the township, and, um, there was a concern expressed tonight about people not following the laws, about where they can use, uh, cannabis, so, a- and that's the same thing can happen with alcohol, um, but these dispensaries not only dispense the herb, the flower, there's a picture of the flower up earlier, but also edibles that have been discussed, and, um, just to reiterate, a lot of, uh, people our age that I'm coming to realize, I guess as the years, as the years go by, that they are taking these edibles to help them sleep and other, um, other symptoms of ailments that, um, the edibles do not have the side effects of, uh, I've had a friend say like, I don't take Ambien anymore, I take an edible before I go to bed and I feel much better, I feel much safer, um, those kinds of substitutes for pharmaceuticals, um, and then finally, I'd like to, um, recognize that on WVXU, they have a program called Inside Edition and on March 4th, they had four panelists talking about, um, recreational cannabis dispensaries, and one of those panelists was the superintendent of Ohio Division of Cannabis Control, which wowed me because, but there is, there's a department, um, in the state of Ohio, because there has to be, so they've been very proactive and stayed up on this, and I was, uh, quite impressed by what that superintendent had to say, he was very well-informed and, um, has, it sounds like he's been doing a lot of, he and his department have been doing a lot of planning, so I wanted to share what information I had that maybe you hadn't, um, heard, and also thank you for your curiosity and wanting to visit the, um, the, um, business, the facility, because that's one of the best ways to learn, is to ask questions and go see what's going on, so thank you.
Can I, can I piggyback off on what she said?
When she's talking about, um, people using cannabis edibles for sleeping and her friend
who, um, used to use Ambien and is able to use cannabis instead and not receive Ambien, one of the things that I'd like to comment, because everything's third-party tested, we know exactly how many milligrams are in each edible, so if you eat an edible, I can tell you it's exactly 10 milligrams of cannabis, or if you eat a apple, it's exactly five the way technology and the way these things are made today, as an educated consumer and adult that we are, I, same way I would have a conversation with my therapist about my depression and I'm trying to take Zoloft and I'm going in there and talking about how I feel on my, my, you know, my depression and they put me on Zoloft, I talk to them about my dose and I say, this is, let's try this, and then, I then kind of see how I feel and then I go back to them and I say, maybe I can increase it, maybe I need to lower it, but I, as a mature 21-year-old adult or patient that I am, you make those decisions on what your dose should be, and that's how I talk to people about thinking cannabis as medicine and understanding what your dose is, so if you want to try for sleeping, you say, okay, maybe I'll try five milligrams, see how it affects me, and then as an educated person, I decide if I want to increase it the next time or lower it the next time or if it was just right, and I'd say the same thing about the way you're, you know, hanging out on a Friday evening or, or any day of the week and you're consuming alcohol, as an educated adult that has consumed alcohol probably in their lives, you know the difference between, between drinking one beer or five beers, what you're trying to accomplish, so as an educated patient, that's how we think, so if you're trying to drink three glasses of whiskey versus one, you know how your body affects that, and cannabis affects people differently, so one of the things that when people are trying to, they're asking questions about it, I always like to try and get back to the dose and understanding, think of this as medicine, know exactly how much you're consuming, and because it's third-party tested, you can tell exactly how much it is, and then you can, as an educated patient that you are, you can decide on how much you need to consume and why, and I think that's a perfect example when she's talking about people using it for sleeping and replacing with something like a pharmaceutical drug like Ambien.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else anybody has? Okay, thanks everyone for coming, so we don't have an executive session, so I move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, very, very much.